Well, welcome to the Acton School Committee Monthly Meeting, Wednesday, June 7th, 2023, at 5:00. We're going to begin with the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any adjustments to be made tonight?
Uh, we do not.
Okay. Then we'll open up for public comments.
My name is Deborah Lopez, and I am the Acton Republican Committee Chair. And I would like to extend a thank you to Mrs. Shane and Mrs. Beers for waiting so incredibly long for the last candidates meeting, for your patience, and I thank you very, very much. Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you for all the nice letters and the way you handled the whole thing. It was done very, very well. Thank you. Done nicely. Thank you.
Very professional.
Okay, so the PTG had something, somebody said?
So my name is Liz Stone, and I'm here with Jamie Tacklin, and we're part of PTG. And we just wanted to hand out a little present to all of the committee and some of the administrators that are here just to sort of say thank you for another great school year. So we all have, we have a bunch of little wild cats.
Aww. Thank you.
Nice.
So I don't, I don't need to.
Want to make everybody guess one?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Make sure we pass these out towards the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public? Yes.
Hi, I'm Kelly Collins. I just want to take a moment to apologize to the school board for my accidental night of the candidates' debate. I do realize I came across as emotional, and I do want to talk further about especially these kids in Acton in the future. But I do believe that it is a special topic that I'm going to do a lot of research on and come with you with facts and less emotion. So I appreciate that. Thank you for the time.
Okay, you're very welcome. Thank you. You had to wait a long time, too. Okay, then let's, if there are no other public comments, let's move on to our celebration of learning and First Grade Wellness Wednesday.
So just to kind of set the stage for the people that are here tonight, we changed the schedule. We voted to change the schedule so early release Wednesdays were changed so that we could get out of school more relatively on time to our schedule. When we did that, it opened up some Wednesday time for everybody, and especially in first grade. And Miss Mitten and Miss Lazard Johnson have really done a great job with something called Wellness Wednesday, which the staff knows I put in my weekly update, and I've also hinted to you, I've sent some pictures. So I've asked them if they'd come tonight, and they're going to tell us what they do in Wellness Wednesday, and I thank them for being here.
I printed some pictures for you all to see, a little bit more close up.
Are we using this?
Yep.
They're on their board, too, but it's cute to just kind of see.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. Let's put it on there.
Thank you.
Give her that one.
Thank you.
You're awesome.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, my gosh, the grapefruit face.
I was looking at that, too. Isn't that cute? Oh, my gosh.
That's about right. Okay, so like John said, after we realized that all those snow days that we had, we're going to be adding in an extra hour to our Wednesdays. I knew that it was going to affect a lot of my kiddos, and they've talked before about how exciting it is to leave early on Wednesdays. They go to their friend's house, they play outside, they go shopping with their mom, things like that. So adding an hour, they were going to be upset, and I knew that. And so I wanted to think of a way that we could make it less of a, oh, we have to stay here an hour to be more exciting, and I get to stay at school for an extra hour, things like that. So we kind of put our thoughts together, and we came up with Wellness Wednesday. So the wise, like we said, snow days. But when we looked at our curriculum and our scope and sequence, we already had our year planned out, and we really didn't need the time, that hour, to go into social studies or science. We had made it up other places. So we wanted to take this time and think of things that were going to be really meaningful and productive for our students and the needs that they had outside of the academics. So we have a lot of our first graders right now going through changes at home, whether that's parents like living at different houses, divorces, things like that. So our social, emotional, learning and needs are really, really high right now. And as you can imagine, it's really hard to get to that type of learning. We have so many standards to teach and things like that. So we thought this would be the perfect opportunity to tie that in. And so going off that, health and fitness was also a really important thing that we don't always get to teach day to day or week to week even. So adding that in was important, too. And obviously, excitement and happiness, and that was something that they were so excited once they found out about. So to go about this, we looked at the needs of our kiddos. I reached out to so many parents. There were so many volunteers that offered to come in. They gave us supplies, things like that. And then we kind of asked our students, like, what was their interest? What are things they want to do under these categories? And then the specialists were a huge help. They also, we collaborated with them, and they were able to come in and help us, give us their materials, things like that. So communicating with the parents was a big part. So I started off with emails, and I explained to the parents what was going to be happening, days that their kids might have needed like boots because we were going outside, or extra clothes because we were doing this, or we were going to be trying smoothies, like, is there any allergies? So I communicated through email. I made this up in the top right corner, you can see it, Google Drive. That was an organized way for me to upload the pictures and the photos and a little blurb about what we did that day. And I would share that with John, and he could see everything that we did. And then he shared it in our weekly update, which you can see at the bottom. And so then our whole school was able to see what we were doing. And I got so many staff come and talk to me and say, this is so great. Like, I love that you did this. So that was really cool to see. And my students kept journal logs. So every Wednesday after the activity that we chose, they got to write in their journal, bring that home, and then they would talk about it at dinner with their families and explain how well it went, what they liked, what they disliked, things like that. So that is the first part.
So we thought it went really well. We got feedback from our staff members that we work with, that they loved what they were seeing as well. We wanted to ask how the students felt about it because the whole purpose of this was for them. So we talked to some of our students. Some favorite activities were definitely going outside on the nature walks, the outdoor time. We did a fruit and vegetable taste test. They loved that. We tried to pick foods that they haven't tried before. And learning about their bodies was one that I was surprised to hear a lot of feedback about. They were excited to learn how their bodies work, their emotions, their heart and their lungs, what food helps them to live a healthy life. I asked, how did Wellness Wednesday make you feel? Because again, we were talking about that social, emotional learning and building. And, you know, good reviews, happy, good. They felt loved, which I wasn't expecting that one. That one touched my heart. Excited and helpful. I did, that one I wasn't expecting either. And reflecting, I can see that a lot of them did have to take on helpful roles, whether helping me, helping Miss Mitten, or helping each other. And that made them feel important. And the last little feedback I got from this Wellness Wednesday, I asked them, what did you take away? Like, what did you learn? And this is right from the students. I may have made it a little, a full sentence. But this is what they said. They liked trying new fruits and vegetables, and they said that they liked finding new foods that they liked, learning about their bodies and how to take care of them, learning how to make healthy choices. What is a healthy choice, and how can I make that choice? And learning the zones of regulation. And they were saying that they were able to identify how they're feeling and communicate that. And then we have some photos that we passed out to you as well.
Yeah, so these are the examples of the different things that we've done. So the first thing that we started off was tricky word relay races. So Mr. Kulpitz, our gym teacher, came, and he set up this whole course outside. And we had our tricky words, which are from our Jolly Phonics program, for those of you that don't know. And it's words that they have to know throughout their year. So we put them on cards, and it was part of the race, having to bring it with you, jump through the hoops, pass it to your friend, read it. So that was really exciting. And then we did smoothies. So as you can see, I brought two of my blenders in, and we made smoothies right in my classroom. And they all loved it, as you can see from the pictures. Around Easter time, we went on a bird nest scavenger hunt. So we went outside, we talked about the things that birds would use, and we made bird nests. And it was a disaster, but it was still fun. And then we, as a surprise, right before they left, I put little Easter eggs in them, and then inside was candies. But when they got home, they got to crack their egg and see what was inside of it. And then Earth Day came, so we talked a lot about Earth Day. And we went outside, and it started to get warm out, enjoy the weather. Mrs. Hall did a session with yoga, and that was really cool to see all the students do that. A lot of them have never done yoga before, so that was a first time. We did a feelings art studio. So we kind of did this where the lights were off. We just had a zero voice the whole time. And we had big paper that had a feeling on it, and they just had to draw and paint what did that feeling mean to them. And they really were successful at that, too. And then the taste tests was personally my favorite. Grapefruit, they did not enjoy. It was so fun to see. And I will say, we had 100% of them try every single thing.
Wow.
Yeah. Not one of them said no. So, and we did, like, there was fruits and vegetables I'd never had before. And so, like, it was, uh...
We had, I found fiddlehead.
Fiddleheads.
One of the students asked for fiddleheads, and I was like, oh, I don't know. They're in season. Sure enough, I had never seen them at the grocery store all year. I walk in, there's fiddlehead, and I'm like, well, now I have to get them. So we cooked those up because you can't eat them raw.
We tried them all together.
We tried it all together. It was very interesting.
Good for you guys for trying your new things, too. All the moms were very happy. So yeah, that's everything for Wellness Wednesday. If you have any questions or anything.
This looks like a fantastic initiative that you guys took. And it would be great if you could somehow work it in every couple of weeks, even if it's not like every week, but that seems like a fantastic program.
Thank you.
You have to leave cactus.
You should have had some butter for your fiddleheads.
A little bit of seasoning.
A little bit of seasoning. Yeah, my roommate's brother is a chef, so I asked him. And I don't know.
You gotta do it, you gotta do it the main way, with vinegar and butter.
Okay. They're good on pizza. They're good on pizza.
Thank you. Ms. Lazard Johnson, thank you, Ms. Mitten. I mean, if you were in first grade, would you love to have them as your teacher?
Absolutely.
Right?
Very fun.
You do a great job, you do. Thank you so much for coming here tonight and doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to number four. Progress monitoring with Patty.
Patty, do you need the screen as well?
I do. So I told you last month we were going to focus on math this time. The unfortunate thing is that Mr. Noel had some units that he needed to finish up. So I do not have the progress for sixth and seventh in here. But in fairness to them, also, they were just piloting this year. Wait a minute, hang on. It doesn't, I need to turn on the slide, she'll see that, see the yucky stuff behind it. So I do have everything from K to five. And I set it up so that we could look at winter for K because I really doesn't suggest their diagnostic testing until six weeks into the year. But the teachers have already said to me, we want to do it in September because these kids are ready. Not only are they ready with the technology and they can use the program easily at kindergarten, right from the get-go, but they are academically ready because of our pre-K program. So kindergarten in the wintertime, you'll see that they had no Tier 3 people, no at-risk. They had 33 at Tier 2, 67 at Tier 1. And Tier 1 is exactly where we want them. And then you can, oop, 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 sorry, sorry. Then you can see in the springtime that we still have no at-risk. We are up to 83 on Tier 1. And there are changes on the right by domain. So numbers and operations and algebra and algebraic thinking are the focus for this program. They make measurement and data and geometry secondary. So a lot of times you'll see red there, but there is none in kindergarten, which was really exciting to see. So first grade in the fall, they take it in September, had 4% at-risk on Tier 3. Lots of people on Tier 2, which you expect at the beginning of the year, and a small group on Tier 1. And if you look at springtime, and I really like the triangle for a visual, there is no at-risk at this time in first grade. There are still some on Tier 2, but only 33 compared to 81, and 67% of them on Tier 1, which is a pretty impressive growth for first grade.
Absolutely.
So I was super excited to see that. Second grade had a really big at-risk in the fall. 31% of them were at-risk. Only 6% of them were on Tier 1. But if you look at the spring, that's down a third to only 10% at-risk. A big chunk still on Tier 2, and Tier 1 had 29%. What this says to me is there was a lot of growth there. But second grade going into third grade is going to be a focus for next year because there are some needs. And that's, this is exactly what we want to look at. In fact, I talked to one of the teachers who was a little discouraged with the diagnostic, and I just really told her, I said, you need to turn that around to, this isn't about whether or not you did a good job teaching your kids. What it is about is what do your kids still need? And where to help them. So you really have to pull that, pull that positive out so it doesn't, it doesn't feel bad. I mean, this is beautiful to me. There's a lot less red, especially in numbers and operation. If you look at the red line in the fall compared to springtime, that's impressive to me. So third grade was kind of in the same situation, 29% at-risk in the fall, only 9% at-risk in the spring. Measurement and data has a big bar in the spring still, but like I said, it's not much of a focus. But look at the change in number and operations and algebra and algebraic thinking. Both areas are impressive. Fourth grade went from 25% at-risk to 5% at-risk. This was probably the biggest change of any of the grades. And it speaks to teaching the program with fidelity and all the work. They turned their Wednesday extra time into win time, which is what I need, and worked in small groups with kids. So they also, in 3, 4, and 5, put extra time in, and it really shows here. And then fifth grade went from 20% at-risk to 7% at-risk. And there are a few places that I know need a little bit of work with some of the kids. But again, that's a focus. It's a positive thing because now we know. And the changes in the numbers are impressive to me also. So I think everybody who worked in this program this year did a really super good job. So that is what our math looks like right now. This information will be shared with the teachers so that they can look at their kids. Some are still taking an end-of-year diagnostic, so we'll look at where they are and make plans for them. And Mike is making sure that we have iReady available for summer programming also. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But I think the data speaks clearly that these kids are working hard, and the teachers are working hard, too.
So the colors that we see, the teachers can see these for individual students, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
That's what makes it...
Right.
They can see which individual students need each specific area.
And it breaks, it breaks everything down for each of the kids, and they can do a really deep dive into exactly what their kids need. And group from there.
It's a great program.
Yeah, it is. I love it.
Very impressive, yeah.
Was, I had a question. Was there 100% participation across all students, like, for all students in all grades?
In all grades, yes. Except, the only ones, like I said, the only ones I don't have data on right now are 6th and 7th. 8th grade did not do this program.
But all students did the assessments?
In, all the way up through 7th grade, yes. I don't have the, I don't have the finished for our 6th and 7th yet, but the teachers will as soon as it's done. It's instant. That's the other thing I like about it. It's instant information. We don't have to wait for this. So, and if you're interested in what your kids are doing, simply, you know, let Mr. Noel know, or let me know, and I can print, you know, whatever. There's a family lot of that can go home.
Yeah, these are great numbers, like, great improvements.
Yeah, I'm, you know, the teachers have been working really hard. The kids have been working really hard. You know, it's a tough program. There's a lot of rigor to it, and they're not afraid of that.
Patty, I have one more question.
Yeah.
Does that program account for COVID and students maybe having lack of exposure? Did they make any adjustments in how they're assessing the students with that program?
So what they, what this program is, is it's a lot like the NWEA. It will adjust itself, but it also looks for holes. So like, when we first started taking this, when we first did the diagnostic, I said to my class, I was teaching 4th grade, and I said to my class, I said, do you know what Swiss cheese looks like? And they're like, no. I said, well, it's that cheese with the holes in it. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I said, that's what your education looks like right now because of COVID. There were holes in everything. And I said, you know, this program is going to fill the holes. So every child, according to how well they do on their diagnostic, has their own pathway. So when we tell them to go into their pathway, or they choose to go in their pathway in the summertime, which they can do all summer long, then that pathway is filling in the holes. So everyone's is different.
Thank you.
So everybody has holes in different places.
Exactly.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, some of them would do really, really well in numbers and operation, but when you get into algebra and algebraic thinking, which is the word problem piece, they're like, yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah, when I was seeing algebra and algebra things for first grade, I'm going, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, it's funny to watch when you say to them, oh, you just, you just did some algebra, and they're like, wow. It is, it's good. It's a good program.
Is this the first year for this complete, for this second year?
No, this is the second year.
Okay, so did you have a baseline from the first year as far as how the students have progressed? And will that be moving forward with the students as their entire term here at Acton?
Yeah, everything moves forward with them. So, so you can look at, you know, we can look at from the beginning. Everything is archived in the program. So I can pull up in the history what they did last year.
These are impressive numbers from when I first started coming in and started looking at the iReady.
Yeah.
You gave me a lot of good information on it. So these numbers are impressive. And I was just wondering on that aspect was, you know, how the child can see themselves progress.
Mostly what they're seeing right now is a year-to-year. But seeing from beginning of year to end of year, but they can. It is possible for them to look at themselves from last year to this year, so.
I think it'd be more important for the parent.
Yeah, yeah. For the kids, they like to see where their progress is. So I've charted out everybody's number-wise, and you can look at those that met their typical growth because the program sets a typical growth. And a lot of them met their stretch growth, which means they went way beyond what the program expected them to do. I mean, we had some kids who made 60 and 70 points of growth from there.
That's incredible.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, so it's exciting.
And going back to the question about COVID, I think everyone, everywhere is still catching up from COVID. And I think this program, this iReady program is a great way to help our kids catch up in that, just as the Jolly Phonics is as well.
Right, and we piloted the reading. We piloted the iReady reading this year in K to 5, and that will be implemented for K to 5 next year. Fully implemented. So it's the same format with the same, they have a pathway. It's just the reading piece. So, and that's what we, I showed last week, last month, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Patty. Anybody else? Are we all set on that? Okay, then let's move on to number five. May I look for a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Yep, I'll move that we can accept the consent agenda as written.
I'll second that.
CJ and Jeanette, a discussion? All in favor? Okay. Then we will move on to number six and the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I have a few items. It's a busy time of year. To start with, I received a very nice thank you card from Warrant Finance to all of us for such a great budget process. And they all signed it. I'll send that around to you. It was well received and thank you. We got a Warrant Finance member right here. Signature's right on there, so thank you very much. It's always a good process working with you.
I just want to make sure you sign it. Just want to make sure you signed it.
She's looking for me.
Yes, she's looking for it now.
Yeah, oh, there you go. I see it.
Well, that's very nice if I'm good at that.
A few other things. I'll just kind of give them in order as what's going on. Tomorrow, we have pre-K graduation at 1:30 PM, and the 8th grade capstones all morning. I think one or two of you might be involved over here in some of the judging, which is great. Thank you for your time on that. Tomorrow, I leave early, earlier than 7th grade, but the 7th grade and I will head up north for two days for ropes course and rafting. Supposed to be blended weather. I think they're going to love that. It's a great facility that we go to. Mrs. Hall's going to be on the bus with Ms. Lazard Johnson, who you saw tonight. They're going to be the two staffers. And Jamie Show's coming along. Robbie's dad did help with some of the boys, and he'll be on the bus with them. I'll meet them up there. And our bus driver's Michelle Libby's husband, Matt, who does a great job. So a shout out to all of them. We'll see how it goes. We always have a great time. So we're looking forward to that tomorrow and Friday. And then on Friday, the 8th grade will be out of town with a Canopy Lake trip that they do every year as part of their graduation. So it's going to be quiet. Patty's going to have a pre-K through 6 school year on Friday. Yeah, good for you. Yeah, we're going to see that. That lunch group's going to be easy. Yeah. Yeah, and then on Tuesday, we have field day next week, moving up into next week. And then, of course, 8th grade graduation is Thursday night inside, regardless of the weather. We chose to have it inside this year just for planning purposes at 6:00 on Thursday, 6:15. And then Friday, 6:16, the school year is done at 12:30. Just note to everybody, 12:30 is the last day of school a week from Friday on the 16th. Another part of my update, I didn't put it on the agenda, but I thought maybe we could check now. We need to schedule a workshop for the summer. And I know Mondays work for you, CJ.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
I have a recommendation because it works with summer school and for Patty, is that we maybe meet in the afternoon of the 17th, which is the second Monday of summer school in July. That would be July 17th. Let's make sure that's a Monday. I got it right. And it would be sometime in the afternoon, like after noon time, maybe 12:30 or 12:00. Okay?
That works for me.
July 17th?
Yeah. Could you, could we make, and that'll be here during the day? And I just, I wanna communicate that, you know, usually we go over goals for the school and other things. This year, I'd really like to, I've been thinking about this and working with some people, that we probably want to, the school committee and myself and the staff might want to consider something like a, at the workshop, talk about kind of how to form a climate committee for the school to kind of, kind of fair it up, different things that are happening. Because we're pre-K through 8, and there's different issues at different ends of the building regardless. My thinking is that it would be-
It's after lunch-ish.
After lunch-ish. Call it, wanna call it 12:15, just to have it on our books? 12:15 on the 17th Monday? Okay. And Jen, would you put that in minutes please? The other thing, the other thing I was thinking about bouncing ideas off some people is that, you know, we need all voices. That's teachers, admin, ed techs, people in the kitchen, you know, custodians. There's a lot of people to work here, bus drivers, you know, so that we get input from everybody. And I kind of framed it as PBIS for the staff. We do a nice job with PBIS for the kids with expectations, and this is what, you know, we expect when we have this place called school. And I think it might be an interesting visit for us to have a think tank and talk about with different stakeholders about what PBIS for the staff might look like and how that might play out next year. There's a couple other things too that'll come up in that workshop that, on the agenda that we might be looking at, you know, maybe looking at our hiring practices as well and perhaps a communications tool. But, you know, we've got a month to form the agenda. We've picked the date. I think that the focus of the workshop could be on culture and climate, and call it PBIS for staff for now, certainly, that's just a name I came up with. It can be anything. I'm glad we got that on the agenda and got that done because that'll be the next time we meet. Because this is the last regular school committee meeting for the school year, just tonight.
Right, yep.
Okay, and that, I think that is everything for me. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Sean?
Is that workshop open to the public?
It is. Any, any workshops open to the public. Yep. Yep, and it would, so Ray, the other thing is if it becomes a school committee meeting, this is good to know too, if the school committee votes, school committees don't vote in workshop. It's a workshop, and we can have public participation, and we can invite people to come. If we, say we have to do a late hire, say I need to hire somebody and I'm not getting it done tonight, which is the last school, and I, I would then ask the committee, I'd ask the chair, "Can we have a 10-minute school committee meeting?" We would open, do the pledge, do the hiring, recess, and then go right into the workshop. Because they need to vote on something like hiring, but the school committee doesn't need to vote in anything at a workshop. What happens in a workshop is we may have a product or a process that comes out of the workshop that might be totally administrative in, in process, meaning it's on the administration to ensure that what the school committee asks gets done. Or it could turn into a policy, and if it turns into a policy, then at a regular school committee meeting, it would be voted on at that point. So, not knowing where it's going, there's several outcomes.
Okay. Do, do any school committee members have any questions for any of the other administrators from their reports and our packets?
No, but I was just looking at the facility director. We got our check back, right?
Oh, yeah.
Forty-two thousand?
Finally.
Two hundred and five dollars from Efficiency Maine. They weren't too efficient to send it back, were they?
You notice the change when we hired Paula. She used to work for a collection agency.
Maybe that was it. Maybe that was it.
Yeah, it's good to have that. It's good to know that that's here. Makes Jeanette especially.
I know. Things like that bug me. I want my money.
Okay, let's move on then to number 7, which is committee reports. Does the policy committee have anything to report tonight?
We did not meet this month, but we just have some carryover stuff to approve, some second readings, and I think the 7-1-3 just didn't print out the last time, so we tabled it. Right? Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
That, that was a review.
It was a review, yeah, but just the, the updates that we made
Right.
just didn't print.
Okay. Okay, so let's, let's take the first, let's take them, technical difficulties. Let's take the first, let's take them separately because they, they need to be, some of these need to be approved and adopted.
Yeah.
J1C1, J I, I guess these are I's.
Yeah, there is.
These are letters. J I C I R, Weapons in School Procedures. Look for a motion to accept that policy, adopt it as a second reading.
I'll make a motion that we adopt as, as a second reading. J I C I R, Weapons in School Procedures.
A second?
That's a second reading, yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor? Okay, we have another one that we're ready to adopt as a second reading, and that is EFB, which is Free and Reduced Price Food Services. We'll look for a motion to, to accept that, to adopt that as of this date.
Okay, we can accept EFB, Free and Reduced Lunch Price Food Services, the second reading, so we can adopt that.
A second?
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Okay, and the other one is not a new one. J I C I A, Weapons, Violence, Bullying and Safety. That's just a review with some corrections, which we didn't have all of them the last time.
That's right.
Do you want to mention what those were or?
Um, these are the, again, the updates that we are just kind of working through in all the policies, changing board to school committee. Um, there was a couple of very small typos. Witty is not a word, so we changed it to with. Changing superintendent to superintendent principal. Um, and then we also added, just, we added superintendent principal or designee in one spot. There was a random, like, thing that goes in the sample policies that we, that was forgotten to take out when we actually adopted it the first time. Local boards may want to consider adding the following paragraph, and then it wasn't actually in there, so.
All right, so this is an update, and I will look for a motion to accept J I C I A, which is student-
Weapons, Violence, Bullying and Safety.
Weapons, Violence, Bullying and Safety.
Yeah.
As adopted, as updated as of this date.
I'll move that we accept policy J I C I A, Weapons, Violence, Bullying and Safety, as reviewed, or as updated, sorry.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. Okay, let's see, Long Range Planning?
We did not meet.
Did not meet. Okay, so then let's move on to new business.
Okay.
And on the new business, we have, first of all, we have some new hires.
We do, and we thank you to all the teachers that have served on these hiring committees. As you know, the budget allowed us to expand into a 6th grade team. We had some hiring there. We've had some resignations before that you've accepted for people who are moving on for different reasons and moving away. We also have some retired, so I have four that I'm providing for you tonight. And I have a candidate for the health PE teacher named Audrey Paskowski. I have an art teacher, is my recommendation tonight, who is Rebecca Poliquin or Becky Poliquin. Our ELA slash social studies side of the 6th grade teacher team is Isabella Blumenfeld, and 7th and 8th grade math teacher, we just worked through the acceptance today of Allison Lavasser to do that 7th and 8th grade math for next year. And I handed Judy the details for the motion, so that you can do that.
Okay, so I'll look for a motion to hire Audrey Paskowski as a health and PE teacher for next year with a bachelor in plus 15 at step zero at a salary of forty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars.
So moved?
I'll second that.
All in favor? And then I'll look for a motion to, to appoint, to hire an art teacher, Rebecca Poliquin, with a master's degree at step 15 at sixty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Still moved?
What was the amount again?
Six-seven-four-six-nine. Somebody second that?
I'm second.
Okay.
Sorry.
We can't write that fast.
All in favor? Okay, and let's look to hiring an ELA plus English, English Language Arts and Social Studies 6th grade teacher, Isabella Blumenfield, Feld, Blumenfeld. Bachelor's step zero at a salary of forty-three thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Uh, so moved?
A second?
All in favor? And finally, I'll look to hire Allison Lavasser as a 7th and 8th grade math teacher. She has a BA plus 15. She'll be on step 7 at a salary of fifty-four thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars.
Uh, so moved?
Second?
All in favor? Okay, we welcome these people to our staff.
And I will, when we introduce these, our new, our new parts of our family to the larger family when we do our PD days, and then the school committee's invited to come in on that first day as well, we'll introduce them the way we do with two truths and a lie, so we get to figure out who these people are. And then also, I will ask if they're available to come into the September, or maybe the arc, depending on their family schedules, or October, so you can meet, you know, meet your candidates. So, thank you very much for that support. We got a, a new group that's joining us. Excited about that.
I, can I please have something with their actual correct spellings of their-
I have it. I have. I'm done with mine. I'll bring it to you in just a second. Yeah.
And if his doesn't work, you can give me, you can have mine, which is exactly like his.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on then to number 8-2, which is summer programming.
So, summer programming is in a presentation, and there's no action to be taken by the school committee this evening, but I have Sharon and Patty here, and I just wanted to take a public opportunity to thank both of them for organizing, one more time, a fantastic summer program that's coming up, starting July 10th and running four weeks, Monday through Thursday. Starting at, is it like 8:00 to 11:30 this year?
Eight-thirty to eleven-thirty.
Eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. And I'm sure it's gonna be wonderful, and we have transportation for those that need it, and we've identified the students that could really use the extra help for the summer. And I'll let you two, if you want to add any icing to that cake for us, because you have the details.
No, just that Sharon and I are working together. We're pulling all the kids together because we have ESY kids and regular ed kids who need a little bit of extra. So, we're pulling them all together. We have Chad DePrisco and Kelsey Lizotte Johnson doing the youngers, and we have Megan Goodwin and Jamie Leclair doing the older kids. Sue Addy and I are taking 6th graders who also need some time, so.
And Michelle Libby will be doing special education. And we have ed techs as well, who are gonna be providing services for the students in the general ed setting, so. And also some pull-out as necessary, so it'll be, it'll be really awesome, just like it was last year.
Yeah, we're really excited.
Do you have themes for this year?
We do.
Top, top secret information or?
We have the jungle. We have the Olympics. We have the zoo, which is popular. And we have trees, which is interesting, but I found this really cool STEM activity to go with that one.
Sounds great.
So, and I'm not gonna say what that is, so.
How many kids do you have so far signed up? I know you're still kind of working on getting them.
You know, I mean, I have permissions for at least 20 kids, if not more. And I haven't even gotten with Sharon about which one she's got.
Right now, I think I have about, I have about 12 or 13 guesses, but I still, I'm still waiting on a couple, so.
Yeah, so, any that I don't get permission from will get an email on Friday.
And about what were the numbers last year?
They were about-
About thirty-five.
Yeah, we had about thirty-five kids. It was a good group, you know, and when you split them out over the number of teachers that we have, it really allows for that small, small group stuff, yeah.
It was very targeted instruction. Everybody knows exactly the skill set that needs to be worked on, and I'm sure we'll take plenty of pictures and be able to do a presentation in the September meeting for how the summer went for you.
Oh, yeah, great.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it.
Thanks again for organizing all that, Patty and Sharon. Appreciate it.
I think it's great too that we, you know, and I know at one point it was only primarily special ed, but I think it's great now that we can pick up the kids that need the extra help in the summer and help them along, as give them that same, the same opportunities that we've always given to our special ed kids, yeah.
And, you know, the state was very, had grant monies available, and that was my first, the first grant that I wrote by myself. So, you know, so, you know, it makes it nice for us to be able to, to have the teachers come because we have those monies that help us out, so.
And it really is great that you make it so fun for them.
Yeah, we have a good time. It goes fast.
Patty didn't tell you she's getting a thousand on grants right now. She's, everyone she's written, she's got.
Good, big girl.
Pretty good start.
Well, don't say anything jinx me. I haven't done the ESEA one yet.
We're glad to hear that.
Okay, then, thank you for that. We'll look forward to seeing how that goes. Let's move on to 8-3, which is change in the 23-24 calendar.
This will require action, so you, the school committee's already approved the 23-24 academic calendar for next year for kids, and it's posted. What I'm hoping we can do tonight is, it came up through the AEA, a suggestion, which was great, because I, between the AEA, which is a majority of the teachers, and anybody else who might have looked at it with the support staff, which is everybody, and then administration, we missed this for some reason. So, what I'm asking tonight to amend the 23-24 is to simply, and Jen, I'll give you a copy of this.
Thank you.
Is to simply have the PT conferences in the spring on March 13th and 14th. The PT conferences move to the 13th or 14th, and I've written all over this. So, if you want to know where they are now, you're gonna have to find a clean copy.
Jeanette's got one.
We've asked, we've asked to move it back so that it's closer to report cards. Right now, there's a month in between. It didn't make any sense.
Well, that's a big gap, yeah.
Yeah, we missed it, and, and so what we're gonna do is just make that amendment to March 13th, 14th for parent-teacher conferences. And then I'll update the calendar, and we'll put that one up online.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll look for a motion to adjust, make a change to our yearly calendar for 2023-24 to have parent-teacher conferences on March 13th and 14th.
So moved? Second?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Thank you for that. It'll be very helpful.
Is that the first or second parent-teacher conference?
The second one.
Second one, the spring one, yeah.
Okay, then let's move on to number 8-4, which is special education and what you hear from Sharon.
So, basically what this is about is our special education review took place yesterday from the State Department of Education. And they come every four years to take a look at basically paperwork. Unfortunately, they, they also take a look at things like programming, but they really focus mostly on paperwork when they come and visit. They sit down and they look through all of our files, and they make sure that we pretty much followed all of the procedures better necessarily, so. I just wanted to give you a brief overview of the kinds of things that they asked for. They asked for things like how many students we have in Acton, which right now we're, we're serving 41 in the Acton school. We have 15 in K through 4. We have 11 5 through 8, and these are current numbers. We have 15 who receive speech only. And that is, we contract our speech therapy services through the Center for Communication, which is owned by Fran Bodkin, and she happens to be the person who is providing services for us this year. We also are providing services to CDS children. Fran is providing that. She's contracting with them. She's doing seven students at that level. And also Sanford High School, we have five students with disabilities that are attending Sanford High School from grades nine through 12, and we have, currently have five students who are out of district. And out of district means that there are students who are placed in a special purpose private schools that require extensive services that the Acton schools and, or Sanford High School is unable to, to provide. Two of those students, actually three, are high school students, so.
So, Sharon? Three out of the five are high school, or the other two are elementary?
Well, middle school, it's middle school, yeah.
You said we have 41 attending school, so that doesn't include the high school and the five out?
No, it does not.
So, our school, our school is responsible for 51?
Yes, exactly.
Fifteen, thirty, forty-one?
Yeah, exactly. So, we're responsible, even though they attend Sanford High School. We pay Sanford High School a fee every year, as you know, to do the case management, but we're still responsible, so I participate in their, the IEP meetings. I make IOR, see all of their IEP, make sure everything's in compliance and things like that, so. I still have students that email me and say, "Can you come to my IEP meeting, please?" And I do for the high school kids that want me to go, so.
That's good. It's nice, yeah, to kind of bring like some continuity through their education.
Yes, yeah, I want to see it through.
Because there's a bit of a disconnect once they leave here and go up there. It's kind of like, oh, cut off, now you're over there. So, it's really nice that you provide that continuity for them.
Yes, and I, I really appreciate that they contact me and they want me to go, so.
Security blanket.
Yeah. So, when the DOE wants to come in and visit us, it's every four years, like I said, they look for things like policies and procedures, child fine policies, special ed referral procedures and policies, and restraint and seclusion. All of those were found to be well in compliance. Our evaluation timelines, all of our special education evaluations are required to be- Uh, our evaluation timelines, all of our special education evaluations are required to be um, you know, provided in, within forty-five school days. We were well within that, we, we did not have one that was out of compliance, which is uh, commendable because they said that with COVID and everything going on, I, they think we're like the only school district that actually met those timelines. Um, I E P goals, they look for um, making sure that um, our goals are measurable and that they're aligned with their common course state standards. And also that they're aligned with their disability category, there are uh, thirteen disability categories in the state of Maine. And so um, if you are identified with a specific category, then you want to make sure that the goals are aligned and they meet the needs for that particular category. So they look for that. There are also twenty-five indicators that they look for that are uh, under M U S R, which is the main unified special education regulations. So they look at twenty-five various indicators for the I E Ps. And also they look at the financial documentation, they want to make sure that our I D E A grant, which I believe is a little over about a hundred and two thousand dollars is spent appropriately and that we um, we uh, fill out the paperwork and we submit all of our invoices in a timely manner. So that was well within, uh, we, we did great in that area as well, thanks to uh, Kim and Paul. They're kind of responsible for that. So the preliminary comments from the visiting team um, after they left yesterday, because we have not really received our, our report yet, we will be getting that by June thirtieth. Is that they found that we are very, we're very lucky and very blessed to have a school committee and administrative support in this school. Also, they've seen improvement in our I E P goals. They're saying that they're much more measurable than they were the last time they were here four years ago, that was one of the things. Because I'm in my fifth year here, um, and when we came here, some of the goals, you know, they needed a lot of work and, and they've improved significantly since then. Because they do need to be measurable, it's difficult, sometimes you use words like will improve or will, you know, some words can't be measured, it's really difficult. So we have to work on that, but that's really improved. All required timelines have been met, which is awesome, um, they were very, very impressed with that. Inclusive practices, they're very, very, they said that we're on the forefront for that. As a matter of fact, they're going to be uh, telling other people in the state to, if they want to come visit us, if we want to have them come, because we are doing some pretty good things with that. Learning Center B, doing our mindfulness and restorative practices is something that they uh, want to know more about. And it has been extremely um, you know, helpful and it has been successful, I think, for many of our students. The general ed teachers are awesome here, um, and they don't want their kids to leave the classroom, they want the kids to stay in the classroom. We're very blessed to have um, nine ed techs um, that are working in this school that are identified as special education ed techs. Which is really fabulous, because I've worked in many, many school districts. And um, sometimes I've worked in schools with like two, two hundred kids in one school and they might have one ed tech. Or I've worked in a school with five hundred kids and they have three ed techs. So we are very blessed to have your support as the school board, school committee, excuse me. That has uh, allowed us the opportunity to hire ed techs so that they can support our kids in the, in the general ed setting, instead of pulling them out. Because that to me is the least restrictive environment. And also our collaboration with Child Development Center uh, Services. You know that, as you know in my report today, you know, one of the challenges for C D S this year is they have not been able to staff or provide services for their pre-K kids. And so we thought outside of the box and me and Mr. Ross, as well as our staff, um, special education staff. We contracted with C D S and we provide the services for them, uh, because they weren't able to hire people. So you know, I, I'm very pleased that we have a really good, strong um, collaboration with them and I hope that we continue that next year. And as years go on, so that is something that they commended us for as well, for thinking outside of the box. So um, what happens next, what's, um, they're going to come up with some pre-findings and they actually sent those to me today, which was good. Because I didn't think I'd have them by today, but uh, we can fix these by June thirtieth, I've actually fixed um, two of them already. So Acton will be correcting three out of the twenty-five indicators in student specific files and they're really simple uh, fixes. All of the other twenty-one indicators were found to be well in compliance. The summary of findings will be coming by June thirtieth and um, they will um, give us what's called a cap. We call that a correction action plan, a corrective action plan. And that's going to primarily focus on professional development, so in any of the areas, those three areas that we talked about up top, those indicators. They're going to give us a cap that's going to specifically target those, those uh, indicators. So that, we're not going to work on things we don't need to work on, we're going to work on things that we, just like in math, we want to, we want to focus on the holes and the areas that we need to work on. So that's what our cap will focus on and uh, the corrective action plan needs to be completed with evidence by April thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. And um, that's as much as I know right now, um, because until I get my actual final report um, from them, I'm not going to be able to um, to give you any more information, but that's it in a nutshell.
What are some examples of the indicators, and you don't have to say which ones need to be corrected, you can tell us some of it.
Okay, well, an indicator, a good indicator is um, like least restrictive environment. So um, on the la, it's like typically the last page of an I E P, it talks about why a student can't be included in a, in um, in a typical regular ed classroom. And then you have to have a narrative in that section that says why. So you want to make sure that you, that the language includes what the disability category is. So in some of our I E Ps, we didn't include that, I mean, it was very petty. But you know, we had a nice narrative, but it didn't say, for instance, because of this student's A D H D.
Okay.
Okay, this student has a difficult time focusing, you know, and requires specially designed instruction to uh, teaching strategies for focused level. So we left out A D H D in some areas.
Though it's probably written somewhere else.
And that's actually one of the indicators that we're going to get dinged on, so. So that was a good question, thank you, CJ.
Anybody else have any questions?
One question, you said forty-one students with disabilities in the building. Are these students with only I E Ps or I E P slash five oh fours?
No, five oh fours are completely separate.
Completely separate and.
Completely separate, yeah, I don't even.
So this was just, just looking at I E Ps?
Yes, just looking at I E Ps, yeah.
Any other questions? From anybody, anywhere?
One more question.
Yeah.
Do you also, do they look at your documentation of percentage of time in this perspective?
Absolutely, that's a good question.
Is that something that looked fairly well for Acton as far as keeping children in the mainstream with their typical developing peers?
Yeah, what they do is they look at um, the, the amount of time that a student is pulled out of the general ed setting. So, um, and they look for what's called disproportionality, I hate saying that word because it's really long. But they don't want, um, they don't want to see a school or a district have like a whole lot of kids being pulled out more than like eighty percent of their, you know, more than like forty percent of their day. So if you are pulled out for like forty-one percent of your day or more, you're considered self-contained, okay? So most of our kids, and I could give you the breakdown, I, I don't have it in front of me, but I can have it, if you, if you want me to, I can get that for you later. That, uh, most of our kids are in the general ed setting more than eighty percent of their day. You know, I would say like, probably out of the forty-one, I would probably say, I would dare say like thirty-eight of them. Or thirty-seven of them are, there's a lot of them that are in there, because they're getting their instruction in the general, in the general ed setting.
Within a, with the help of an ed tech.
Right, under the supervision of a special ed teacher.
Right, and I think, you know, I think this has been one of the things that the board has focused on for, since I've been here, is that we want to be sure to provide those services, when we, when we've needed an extra ed tech, we've gone after it, if we didn't already have it, tried to figure out some way to get it. So that these kids could be in, in a regular classroom as much as they possibly could and just get pulled out for extra help or maybe therapy services or something like that. And uh, I'm glad to hear that we have so many of them in getting, you know, regular instruction instead of just being in a special ed classroom, that's, that's great.
We don't have a special ed classroom here, it's like resource rooms.
Resource room, yeah.
And they receive the services, you know, as, you know, every kid is different, so.
Right, sure.
How many kids are currently going um, figuring out if they're going to be on the I E P?
How many referrals are there?
Yeah, like.
Oh, that's a good question, because I have it right on my report. I think we have two right now that are in referral. Two or three?
I think it's just three.
And um, yeah, right at the bottom, three, we have three. And um, we have more referrals this year than um, in the past. And I believe that that is COVID related, I, I truly do, and it, and when we were talking to the Department of Ed yesterday, we, we mentioned that as a, a challenge for us. That we, we're not sure why, and they, they said that it's nationwide, it's not just here, it's everywhere. I mean, COVID has really caused a lot of holes, the Swiss cheese. And, and people are wondering if it's a disability or if it's a COVID thing, so we, we're teasing that out and we're, we're, we have teased it out, we've had some of the referrals that we've had turned out to be not kids that have disabilities, they're kids that have holes and gaps. And we've figured out ways to provide them with what we call R T I, which is, uh, they, they call it R T I here in Acton, it's called response to intervention. Through a multi-tiered system of supports that we have here. So that you're either in, your tier one is in your general ed setting, your tier two might be, you know, with uh, Rachel, Rachel is here, I see her, she's our reading specialist. So I'm, I'm sorry to pull you out of the crowd, but she's awesome, she does a lot of tier two interventions and your tier three is typically your special ed, so.
Great, that's a lot of really fantastic information, thank you. And thank you for pulling it together so quickly. Were you typing up until like four fifty-nine?
I type pretty fast.
Sharon did a great job prepping, they were here yesterday, here we are now, and it's a big deal, and Sharon really spent a ton of time making them feel welcome and had, you know, snacks there so our guests were comfortable and then spent the entire afternoon with them going through all this and pulling this together, so thank you Sharon, well done, well done, thank you.
Yes.
Will this report be made public for viewing?
It's public information, yes, I can, and um, Kelly, if you ever want to sit down with me, I heard you, you know, when you talked about public, is that okay if I do this?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, speaking out there, feel free to call, call me and we can sit down and we can go through everything, any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, I hear that you want to educate yourself more about Acton special ed and I'd be more than happy to, to, to work with you, okay?
You know, it's six o'clock and what's happening at Sanford High School right now?
I know. I hope it's not raining.
End the meeting, Ms. Chair, if we.
Hopefully it's not raining.
Right now, I, I think it's appropriate for us to end our meeting, knowing that uh, an Acton student is a valedictorian of the class of twenty-three for Sanford High School.
Oh, how did the, how did the walkthrough go? I wasn't able to.
That'll be great here.
It was cute, yeah.
And when you, when you see the, uh, maybe we can post, have you posted a picture yet of the seniors out, out front?
The whole process is on the website.
Okay, it's on the website, so yeah, when you see that small group, I, I looked at it again today, because I took a picture of my own, but when you see that small group of about what, eighteen kids or something like that on there, and you realize that they've come through this school in small classes and they've gone on to Sanford High School, which probably the Sanford Vocational Technical School probably has thirteen hundred kids or so. And when you see that out of those thirteen hundred kids, one of our kids from Acton is valedictorian. That's really something that Acton, the whole community can be so proud of. And uh, that's something we really should, should celebrate.
Celebrate.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, anything else?
I need a second and I need a vote.
Yeah. Did you get a motion?
We have a motion, yeah, we're getting ready to motion, we're getting a motion right now.
All right, I move that we adjourn at six oh six.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming everyone.
Thank you, very nice, thank you very much.